Hello, Northlanders. This is Dan Williamson with a special edition of the Duluth News Tribune Minutes. On Thursday, September 14th, candidates looking to represent the Duluth City Council at large took the stage at a forum organized by the Duluth Chamber of Commerce and the News Tribune. The following is the complete audio of that forum. We encourage you to check your podcast feed for audio for other forums we hosted this week to give you the information you need to make decisions at the ballot box that are right for you. And now, here's the audio.
Well, good morning, everyone. We're going to get started here right on time at 10:30. We've got three forums today, so we're going to make it a point to stay on time and end this by 11:30. But on behalf of Duluth Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber Foundation and the Duluth News Tribune, thank you for being here. My name's Dan Fanning. I'm the Vice President of the Chamber and the Executive Director of the Chamber Foundation. We have a number of our staff and some board members here today. So really, on behalf of us again, just thank you for being here. Many of you were here yesterday as well. We really appreciate the support. We really appreciate the partnership with the DNT as well. So they have already done a great job of getting the stories from yesterday up. They'll do the same today. So we don't have, we have a little bit more of an intimate crowd today than we did yesterday, which is great. And all these will be posted on the website, just like they were yesterday as well. So we also partner with the Civility Project. As you see the signs and you met the individuals at the doors, all the candidates have already adhered to those rules, which we appreciate. This is meant to be an informative conversation, not so much a divisive debate, as you will. And we know that won't be a problem today, but we always mention that. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank you to our candidates and thank you to the Duluth News Tribune for the partnership. And I will turn it over to Chuck.
Thank you very much, Daniel. And thank you for everyone for being here, for those who will be watching it online later at duluthnewstrbune.com. As Daniel said, the point of the forums is to be informative, to help voters make good choices this fall. These forums will also help to inform the newspapers' endorsements. Members of our editorial board are here. Candidates, I'd like to point out Kathy in our front row here. She has signs that'll tell you how much time you have left. Opening statements will be a minute and a half, and then answers to questions will be a minute. Since there are four candidates on the stage, we won't do any rebuttals or anything. So can get to your point quickly, I guess. I was told yesterday that the minute ends very quickly. So the Civility Certified folks are here, and we appreciate their cooperation. This is a, this forum is for city council at large. We have the incumbent Eric Forsman, and then we have Lynn Marie Nephew, Miranda, Miranda Pacheco, and Jenna Yechel. And we will start with one and a half minutes. Tell us a little bit about yourselves, why you're running, maybe what your goals or focus might be, or your priorities. We'll start with Eric Forsman.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you, Daniel, and the Chamber, and Chuck with the News Tribune. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I was going to make a joke about how nobody shows up for the council meetings, but you're all here, and I really appreciate that. So serving as a counselor has been an honor and a privilege over the last five years. And during that time, I've tried to tackle a lot of our most challenging issues that we have as a city, and also stepped up when leadership required it. And a few of the examples I would point to is fighting for increased police and firefighter budgets, helping save the Costco project when they announced that they weren't going to be coming to town, keeping the Memorial Day Parade in Duluth after 100 years of being here, helping get Spirit Mountain out of crisis and into profitability over the last two years, and elevating childcare as an important community priority amongst others. I was inspired to run for reelection after hearing from so many community members, many of my city council colleagues, my friends, as well as strangers that I would bump into at the grocery store, the coffee shop, who encouraged me to continue serving. And I chose to run because, in my heart, the passion for public service still burns as bright as the day that I started in this role. And it is a struggle, at times, to balance being a working parent and all the responsibilities that come with that, as well as being a responsive and effective counselor. But I know that I've done it, and I know that I can continue to do it, and I'm looking forward to a great discussion with all of you today.
Thank you, Councilor Forsman. Lynn Marie Nephew.
Thank you. Thank you to Daniel and Chuck for putting this on. We do appreciate it and the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm Lynn Marie Nephew. I'm one of your labor-endorsed candidates for city council at large. I moved to Duluth in the 1990s to attend UMD. When I came here, I fell in love with the city, and I was determined to make this my long-term home. I worked in the tourism industry to put myself through college, and then I became an intern at Safe Haven Shelter for battered women, and later was hired as an advocate working in the court system with domestic violence victims. For the past 20 years, I've built my own small business as a real estate agent. My husband Jim is a Duluth native, and we have four children. I'm running for Duluth City Council at large because Duluth is in a housing crisis. We need a strong and experienced voice on the council. The housing crisis is the biggest issue facing Duluth, and I have real qualified experience to face that challenge. I've worked in the housing industry for over 20 years, both in my business as a real estate agent and through my nonprofit work experience. I've served on the boards of Neighborhood Housing Services, Wondery Community Housing, Common Ground Construction, the City of Duluth Housing Task Force, Housing for Inmates, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Duluth. From supportive to million-dollar homes, I've done it all, and I possess knowledge and invaluable experience that will make me an effective city counselor to take a lead on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Up next, Miranda Pacheco.
I moved to Duluth from Minneapolis, and I was in, I was homeless and in active addiction, and my kids were in the system. And I came here to attend treatment at Mashgawazin Treatment Center. And I decided to stay to build my life here. I was a renter for a little while. My kids started at Duluth Public Schools. And now I'm a first-time homeowner and alcohol and drug counselor at that same treatment center that I graduated from. And I really want to see representation at the table. I think it's really important because right now, it doesn't represent all of Duluth. And I am a felon. I've turned my life around, and when I was notified that I could run for office and also vote, I decided I was going to run for office because we need a voice like myself, who has overcome a lot of adversity. We need a voice like mine at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could please hold applause till the end. Thank you, I appreciate that. Finally, Jenna Yechel.
Is this one on? Yes. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Daniel. And thank you, everyone, for being here. It's great to see you. My name is Jenna Yechel, and I am running for Duluth City Council at large because I want to work together to take care of our community now and in the future. I believe that everyone has a right to feel safe, live with dignity, to be heard, no matter what. And that is not the reality for all Duluthians. And right now, we have big opportunities to change that. I grew up in Duluth. I am a graduate of our public schools, and my first job out of college was at Safe Haven. And since then, I have built a career of community service and advocacy in the nonprofit sector and earned my master's in public health. And I am now a proud first-time homeowner with my partner Chris in the Dunfeld neighborhood. We have exciting opportunities right now to build a vibrant city that does work for everyone. We have historic federal funds and our state surplus that can provide countless of, countless opportunities for the city of Duluth, including increasing affordable housing and investing in our public infrastructure. And these are necessary, exciting community development projects that will have positive long-term impacts for us as residents, as workers, as business owners, as taxpayers. I'm an organizer. I build relationships to create. My job is to break down barriers between people, their elected officials, and the public decision-making process. And decisions that impact all of us should be driven by the community. And I look forward to talking more about our city's priorities with you all today and how I plan to continue serving our community as a city counselor at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. And now, we're going to jump into our series of questions. We have eight questions, and given that there's four onstage, we're only going to have time for one-minute responses each, but we'll still have time for closing remarks as well. So with that, we're also going to rotate the order in which people respond, so Chuck and I will let you know that order. This first question will start with Lynn Marie Nephew, and then go to Miranda, Jenna, and Eric. This first question begins with budgets and city spending and property taxes. In spite of the fact that we received an increase of LGA, which the Chamber was happy to be involved with helping advocate this past year, there still continues to be proposals to raise the city levy. Our question for you is if you are a city councilor going forward, how would you help ensure there's fiscal responsibility at the city while still making sure the city is adequately providing services needed? Lynn Marie, we'll start with you.
I get started with the tough question. So the city budget is the number-one responsibility of a city counselor. Currently, we don't have a lot of money coming in through the city, and the biggest driver for money generation in the city is going to be economic development. But I would argue that that is something that is currently not possible due to the fact that we don't have enough housing units to support growth within the business community. So number-one thing is that we need to increase the housing unit so that we can actually have sustainable economic development, increase the money that's coming into the city, and then that would, again, balance the property taxes. So number-one is let's get some more housing units online so we can actually make that feasible.
Thank you. Miranda?
I think this is going to be definitely a learning curve for me. I'm a single mom. I've raised three children as a single mom, and we're doing OK. And so I do know how to budget on a personal level, for sure. I think that, for me, it's really important that, when I do get elected, that I look at all the information, all the information, do my research, talk to my team members. Yeah, because this is something new for me, but I'm super excited because I love to learn and I love to help, you know? And I really care about all of our community members, and so what is going to benefit all of us?
Thank you. Jenna?
Yeah, thank you for this question. This is the top concern that I hear across Duluth, that property taxes are too high. And as a first-time homeowner and someone living paycheck to paycheck, I deeply know this reality. And I also know that Duluthians want to see their tax dollars at work. And I think that the most important thing that the city council can do is to fight for local government aid dollars from the state to help pay for our city services and our infrastructure. There are other steps that the city can take, of course, and I'm committed to promoting responsible development that does grow the city's tax base. I will work hard to ensure that our city's tourism tax also reflects the true cost that tourism takes on our city services and infrastructure. And we need to be looking at long-term solutions as well, like increasing housing options across all levels, supporting our locally-owned businesses, and that will, that will benefit the city's overall budget.
Thank you very much. And Eric?
LGA is great. I've been fighting for an LGA increase. Local government aid funds a large portion of our city budget for years. However, the more reliant we are on the state, the more at risk we are that our city budget is variable. So we have to grow internally, within the city. And economic development and housing, economic development being my background, are really two sides of the same coin now. You can't do one without the other. We also have to prioritize where we're spending city services on, but the reason that the city budget and the levy has gone up about half of last year's levy increase was due to our city employee healthcare plan. And so we cannot continue to invest more in new services, in better services, unless we address some of those structural issues that Council President Kennedy and myself and others have learned a great deal about on our council. And I feel, as a labor-endorsed candidate, I'm uniquely positioned to help us navigate through that so that we do treat our employees well, we're able to retain and recruit the best, but also invest more in core city services. Right on time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. At least a couple of people mentioned housing. We will be asking about housing, but first, we're going to ask about potholes and infrastructure and fixing the streets. We're curious if you think there's any way that we could ever get to a point where people aren't complaining so much about their streets and their potholes? How can the city do a better job of repairing more streets? And we'll start with Miranda Pacheco.
That is on my platform, for sure. I have been door-knocking nonstop, and that comes up at the door a lot. And it's just, it's sometimes we laugh about it, and sometimes we talk about, you know, geez, well, we have to bring our car into the shop, and we can't afford it because I'm not making enough, and we're in a housing crisis, and we're this, you know? And all these, it seems like all of these issues intersect, you know? And I'm really excited to, I know there's a solution. I know there's something that somebody else is doing in another city, you know? And we, we can be innovative, and we can try other things, and that's, that's my stance on everything. Let's try something else. Let's, you know, something that works for everyone. I paid $1,600 when I first started this campaign to get my front end fixed, so it affects me as well.
Thank you. Jenna Yechel.
Yes, potholes. And I live in the Dunfeld neighborhood with my partner, Chris. We ride, we rode our bikes here today. We ride our bikes almost everywhere. And, and our street, too, we experienced just craters. It was like riding up the street. It was like riding on the, on the moon. That is an incredible challenge for a city of our, of our climate. We are a cold-climate city, and, and I know that public infrastructure is, is such a concern for folks. It is vital that we are making investments that do benefit all Duluthians rather than just tourists and the wealthy few. And I will make sure that our city is invest, is investing in the infrastructure that we depend on every day by prioritizing street repair and maintenance. And I think this is a larger conversation, too, around sidewalks and accessibility and, and snow removals. So I'm, I'm very excited to keep exploring, exploring that issue as well.
Thank you. Eric Forsman.
Yes, and my street literally washed away in the middle this year, and so it was closed on each end for about three months. So I can relate to all of you with the condition of our roads. And it's been a problem for decades, and we know that, and it's a money problem. So how do we fix it? Well, we have to devote more resources toward it. So the mayor came out with her budget proposal to say, let's spend some reserves on streets. We have a cushion from where we need to be on our reserves without affecting our bond rating. I'm supportive of that. We can do that one time. So if we're going to grow a sustainable street fund that goes well beyond where it is, we have to fix the structural budget issues that have plagued the city for many years and continue to eat up our levy, and then we have to grow. We have to bring in new revenue. We have to have economic development and more housing, and we need to do it in a way that puts Duluth on the map, like many of the other regional centers that are growing and are seeing investment in their communities so that we can spend more on streets, because it's the top priority of mine. It's the top priority of everybody who runs for council. How do we get more money for it without taxing you is the question.
Thank you. Finally, Lynn Marie Nephew.
So yes, streets, I would agree. That is probably one of the top things that we hear when we're out with the public, and it is a money issue. Right now, I think with the amount of streets that have been done in the last years, we're at 26.2, is I think what I calculated for the amount of years for us to get to all the streets in the city. And I mean, streets don't last 26.2 years. So we need to figure out how to drive more money towards that, and that would be through economic development and just reprioritizing infrastructure within the city budget, I think, would be really key in doing that. It's a hard place to live. It's a harsh climate, so maintaining streets is a hard thing. So reprioritize, create housing units, economic development, and decide that streets is going to be one of our priorities, I think, would be key.
Great. Thank you all. So question three, we're going to shift our gears just a little bit to parks and recreation. As many of you probably know, last year, there was a referendum on the ballot that did not pass. So given that, how do you believe the city can best address funding for parks, maintenance, and improvements that we know are necessary? Jenna Yechel, we'll start with you for this one.
Yeah, thank you. I grew up in Duluth. I love, I love our, our parks. My partner and I take our, our dog on walks and to the, to the dog park, and I am grateful for the city's leadership in, in maintaining, sustaining, and growing our green space that is used by thousands of people across the city every day. Yes, this is a budget issue. Duluth can and, and must maintain a healthy budget reserve to protect, to protect us against economic downturns, to support the, the city services, the core city services that we, we deserve and that meet our needs, and that includes supporting our parks. That includes supporting the, the safety, the maintenance, the equipment, the accessibility. Yeah, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I mean, parks is the core of our city. It's the reason why people want to be here, our green space. And as a T-ball coach, I know firsthand how poor-conditioned some of our ballfields and rinks and courts are. So I'm really excited that we have an opportunity, through the extension of our half-and-half sales tax, to be able to invest over $30 million in those facilities across the city evenly. So that's a start, but we also know we need to go farther. We're $150 million in the hole on Parks Capital. How do you dig out of a hole that big for something that is a priority, but also, we have other priorities like streets and public safety? And it starts with making sure that we have sustainable revenues that are dedicated to those amounts. And we also have to build trust that Duluthians are seeing their city dollars spent wisely. And that's why the Parks referendum, I believe, didn't pass, is because folks want to see where those dollars are being spent more easily. But this is a critical issue. We have to invest in our kids, and we have to invest in places for them to be, and that's why I'm really looking forward to figuring out, how do we allocate that $30 million across the city?
Perfect. Lynn Marie?
So parks, I consider them to be one of the city's last leaders. We need parks. We need extracurriculars. We need other things in order to recruit some of those businesses to come to town, to have employees come here, have employees stay there. Because I know, as a parent of four, and I have two kids that are in college, because of our parks, our recreations, and the opportunities that my had, my kids had in town, it gave them the line items that they needed in order to get to the colleges that they wanted to go to. Parks, extracurriculars are important for our kids. They're important for business development. They're important for recruiting. So we do need to find a way to sell that or have Duluthians understand the importance of that, understand the investment of that, and then also let them see where the dollars are coming in real every day as far as improving their everyday lives and for their families.
Thank you. Miranda?
Yeah, as far as parks, I just, I think about, you know, my kids and other people's kids and how important that is to have parks for our future, right? They're future Duluthians. I would support, you know, have. I'm not sure about the budget. Again, like I said, that is going to be a learning curve, but also knowing that a lot of people come to Duluth for our beautiful, our, our beautiful landscapes, right? And so that's going to be definitely one thing that I would lean on my team members to talk more about, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Whether fair or not, Duluth has long had a reputation for being a tough place to do business. How can the city do a better job of supporting local businesses and encouraging economic development? Eric Forsman will begin with you.
Yep, that is the perception, and I think the hiring of Chad Ronchetti as our DETA Director was a great next step in evolving that. He's going to be terrific. He's going to work to build a great culture with that team. We also need to invest in our Duluth Economic Development Authority. We under-invest in that so that they can't go out and do things as well as they could on removing blight, getting sites ready, whether it be for housing or development, and helping speed up the permitting process. Permitting needs to be reliable, consistent, and hopefully speedy. And our neighboring cities, quite frankly, are doing a better job of some of that than we are. And that's nobody's fault individually at City Hall, but it's a systems issue, and I believe that Chad is going to get after that. But there are enormous opportunities. There are billions of dollars being spent across the US right now as we look at decarbonizing our economy. So if we want to go after solar manufacturing or any of the cotton industries that we have opportunities to land good-paying jobs at, we have to be ready, and it starts with investing in DETA.
Thanks. Lynn Marie Nephew?
So this is one of the reasons why I'm running. I know in the housing world, the reason why we're not seeing more units come online is because the permitting process is challenging. There's a lot of overlaps between departments. The city itself ordered a Baker-Tilly study, and in that study, it talks about a lot of the issues that I think community members, whether or not you are putting on a deck on your house, or if you are a large commercial contractor trying to build a number of housing units. There's overlap within departments, and because of the overlap, not all departments agree with each other, and that makes construction more expensive. The overlap is the biggest problem, in my opinion, and we need to streamline, simplify, and cut the red tape within the permitting process in order to develop properly. And density as far as housing, density as far as industry is actually great for the climate. So if we focus on Duluth instead of having our cities that are surrounding us develop the housing units, develop the industry, it will also be better for the environment long-term.
Thank you. Miranda Pacheco.
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question is how the city can do a better job of supporting local businesses and also encouraging economic development.
Yeah, that, that's a hard question. You know, what comes to mind is this lady that I was talking to at the doors. She had a small business down on First, on First Street, and she had to close because of, like, drug use and mental health and stuff. And so I, of course, when I stepped up to run, like, that was my main priority was, obviously, because I have that background, and we need to look at housing. We need to, like, really, I think that we need to pause because how are we going to develop things and throw money at things when we have community members that are already suffering? Like, people are living on the streets. People are living in tents right now, you know? We have a mental health crisis as well, and so that is not going to fix, like, money is not going to fix that problem that we have. If we keep on building and building, guess what? The community members that we have now are still going to be struggling.
Thanks. Jenna Yechel?
Thank you. Well, thank you also for the Chamber, who I know recently did some residential surveys and, and researched, and is now informing kind of their longer-term plans, focusing on housing development and advocating for our local business issues, supporting local business, celebrating our, our local businesses. I think this is a bigger question about economic justice and who in our communities are benefiting from our, from our local economy. Duluth has serious wealth and racial inequalities, and we have really big opportunities right now to invest in community development projects. There is a $17 billion state surplus. There is federal funding opportunities through the Infrastructure and Jobs Act and the Inflation Reduction Act. And the City of Duluth, I believe, must use these opportunities to undo those systemic inequalities. And I know that our community members have, have solutions. Our business leaders have solutions, and I will ensure that Duluthians have a seat at the table.
Thank you. That's actually a perfect segue to our next question. And just a time check, we're about halfway through the questions now, and we're halfway through the times. We're right on time, so great job with that. Thank you for staying on time. You mentioned the survey that we just released a few days ago. That's perfect, a segue to our fifth question. The top of that survey results, asking citizens what their top concern is, is housing and homelessness. So that's what our next question is going to focus on. As you all know, we continue to talk about homeless encampments throughout the community. We get calls from business leaders who sometimes feel unsafe downtown. As a city counselor, how can we help address the issue of both a lack of affordable housing and homelessness? I know many of us have brought that up already this morning, but specifically to those issues, what can we do? What could you do as a city counselor? For this question, we begin with Lynn Marie.
Sure. So for housing itself and the homeless population, we really need to create more supportive housing units, recreate models that are working. I'm part of a nonprofit startup right now where we secured a building and we are creating supportive housing units for those people who experience long-term incarceration. And more of these programs need to be encouraged in order to help the homeless population in order to be successful. Combined with the fact of creating just more housing units in general, will take pressure off the system. I know in my business alone, I have a backlog of first-time homebuyers who would love to buy a house, but there's not enough housing units for them. But if we created the units and we took the pressure off that multifamily system, you'd also allow for more units for people to move. A housing system needs to be fluid, and it's not right now. We should have more than a two-week supply. We should have a six-month, a three-month supply at minimum, and right now, we're running at about two weeks or less in everything. So the lack of fluidity is probably the biggest issue with that and supportive housing in general.
Thank you. Miranda?
Yeah, that's one of my priorities as well. Like I said, I've been out door-knocking, and when I first started this campaign, it was mostly for people experiencing homelessness. Like, I wanted to, you know, figure out some solutions towards that, but now, since I've Like, I wanted to, you know, figure out some solutions towards that. But now, since I've been door-knocking, I've talked to this lady who has a college degree, and she's living with her dad because she can't find affordable housing. And I've heard other stories from our community members that are pretty similar. And also, people that are retired, and they're on a fixed income, and they're thinking about leaving Duluth because they can't afford their property taxes. And that, that's just not right to me, you know? Like, I am super passionate about housing, because I've been homeless, and now I'm a homeowner, and I know what that does for people. Like, I can start to dream about a future, because I have housing now.
Thank you. Jenna?
Yes. Too many Duluthians are struggling to find or maintain quality housing in our community. And I know, and I believe that housing is a human right. This is the number one issue across Duluth right now. And the city does have tremendous opportunities to build more affordable housing, upgrade our existing housing stock, and do more for community members experiencing homelessness. Some things that I would support, actually increasing, developing truly affordable housing, including deeply affordable housing, and expanding public housing. We need to be exploring protections for renters, which are about 40% to 50% of our community. We can improve the quality of our existing housing stock through rehabilitation programs. And I do believe that we deserve better transparency from developers, ensuring that decisions are made locally by the community, and that we are using local union contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric?
Yeah, a tent is not a good outcome for anybody. We need to do better across the board. And I'm part of a group that's working right now with the county and other multi-government jurisdictional folks to try to figure out how to better address encampments. Year after year, I vote for housing projects that are deeply affordable, that don't get state funding, and they don't get built. And we vote for them the next year and support them. And I have voted for every single housing project that has ever come forward to the city council. Not everybody can say that. So there's only so much the city can do, but what we can do is also support the stepping-on-up plan. I'm looking at allocating, the third question on that chamber survey was around how to spend money from the sale of a Sears building. I'm working with Vice President Roz Randolph on allocating some of that to help match the stepping-on-up Phase One, which will hopefully decrease the amount of people who are in encampments and build a safer place for transitional housing. We need housing at all levels, and we also need to do no harm. And policies like rent control that are being shopped would be terrible for the city of Duluth.
Thank you all.
Our next question is about downtown, which of course is a far different place than it was before the pandemic. Considering the many empty offices, empty storefronts, needles on the ground, other signs of drug use, what is your vision for improving our downtown and helping it rebound? And how can we get there? Miranda Pacheco, we'll start with you.
I think that it's really important that, you know, somebody like me with a, with mental health and addiction background, would be at the table. I believe in all ways of, you know, like, harm reduction. I also am going to support, like, social workers out in the community. I forgot right now what they're called, but social workers that work with the police department, because not all, not, like, we need to decriminalize homelessness. We need to decriminalize mental health. We need to, like, decriminalize all of that and stop the shame, stop the stigma, so that people can get help and they feel safe getting help in Duluth. We, all communities deserve to be here, right? All communities are not, all community members are not the same. Some people need help, some people want to have a small business. Like I said, that lady that I talked to, like, it hurt, because she, I could tell that she was so hopeful about her small business, and she had to close it because of the needles and stuff. And so I want all community members to live here.
Thank you. Jenny Jaegel, on your vision for downtown?
Yeah. And growing up in Duluth, I have seen years of downtown's evolution, and it has looked very different over the past, over the past 30-plus years. And I have always believed that our downtown has great, great potential. And our conversations about housing, about employment, about workforce development, community service, community services, transportation options, all of those can't happen in silos. I believe that enhancing our residential space downtown with some high-density planning and looking at what mixed-use development could look like downtown could have some really amazing ramifications for our downtown community.
Thank you. Eric Forsman?
I think we first have to acknowledge that downtown is built for a world that no longer exists after COVID. Hybrid work is here to stay. We have a lot of office space that needs to go. And that's going to look different, and it's going to involve money and partnerships with the public and private together, particularly along First Street. I think First Street is our first opportunity to really reimagine what that space looks like. And I'm really excited about some things that I'm working on and that are in the pipeline. I also think that we need to continue programs like the 1200 Funds, downtown programs that have helped inspire BIPOC business owners to put in pop-up shops downtown, and also to help invest in storefront revitalization so that it feels like a safe place. Because while downtown statistically is not a less safe place than it has been, it feels different. Anybody who's been here, and I've spent 14 years working downtown, can tell you that it just doesn't feel the same. And the way that we get back to what the vibrancy of downtown used to be is we think about it more as a neighborhood, perhaps a little bit less as a commercial center, and rebuild it accordingly.
Thank you. Lynn Marie Nephew, the final word on downtown?
So with downtown, retail is going to follow people. You don't want to build a business unless there's a captive audience to spend money at your business so it's successful. So to think about that, downtown needs an opportunity for homeownership. We have rental down there, we have some high-end condos, but we don't have stuff in the middle. Co-op housing is actually a really good way in order to put some middle-income housing in downtown units. We have co-op units right now, like Gramercy Park, it's up on Haynes Road. It's a senior 55-plus co-op housing unit, and it's got a five-year waiting list. Actually, I think it's pushing six. And that's not a healthy housing market. And if we encourage some of that stuff downtown, the infrastructure's there, and we can go to some of the building owners and show the opportunity that it could be for, or recruitment of businesses to rent maybe their retail space on the first floor, and how those association fees can help them maintain their buildings. I think there's opportunities to do that. So that would be a good place to start and change the dynamics, and make sure businesses can be successful.
Thank you. Question seven is a bit of a follow-up to that one, but just taking it beyond downtown, just talking about public safety in general. It's also one that ranked highly on a recent survey. People still, there's a perception, reality or not, there's a perception of feeling unsafe. While some crime statistics are down, there are some crime statistics that are up, including some violent crimes. So with that in mind, should you be elected to the city council next year, how would you work with other city departments, Duluth Police Department, and just make sure that Duluth continues to address public safety and crime, including violent crime and gun violence? We'll start this one with Jenna Jaegel.
Thank you. The conversation about public safety really opens a big discussion for me about social, economic, and racial justice. And I think I'll try to take this in two parts. As a public health professional, I know that the best way that we promote public safety is to create safe, healthy, and thriving communities. That means housing, that means food security, healthcare, community resources and services, and fostering community connection, opportunities to live a prosperous life. And the city of Duluth definitely has an important role to play in making sure that residents have what they need. And we know that when needs are met in our community, that we see a reduction in crime and violence. And as a city, I know that it is the responsibility to provide professional first-response programs and services, like porting our police department and our fire department. Mental health crises, addiction, and homelessness should be met with compassion, well-trained first responders, and robust human services. And I am so committed to working towards a holistic public health, public safety program that puts our communities first.
Thank you. Eric?
I am proud that the Duluth police officers and firefighters have chosen to endorse my campaign for the second time in a row. I go on ride-alongs, I visit the fire halls, I understand their jobs, I understand their challenges, and I've provided their funding. Our police department and our firefighters were ranked last in base wages for all comparable departments in the state of Minnesota. And so at the height of 2020, recognizing with George Floyd's murder, we are having an entirely different conversation about public safety than we've had before, and that is a good thing. We still needed to address those wages, because what I didn't want is for us to lose our best and brightest. And so we went forward with an 8% wage increase for our police department. That got them up to about the median. And we're about to do the same thing with the fire department. And I'm really proud of that work. I'm proud to be able to support all of that, and I was proud to help work with my council colleagues to get funding permanently for our Community Crisis Response Program. But that is in addition to our police and fire, not a substitution.
Thank you. Lynn Marie?
I too feel very honored for the fact that the police and fire department have as well endorsed me. My history with the police and fire department goes back over 20 years, to my time when I was working at Safe Haven Shelter. At that time, I was, I learned that the reason why there's many domestic violence laws and Violence Against Women Act in itself is because of the partnership the Duluth Police Department had with the Duluth Project in creating those. We have a very progressive police and fire department, and we need to keep that. And that's going to be through high-quality wages and making sure that they're paid well to do their jobs. They aren't there to just put down a heavy hand on the community. They're there in order to get people connected with social services, in order to help them and put them on a better path in life. And we need to support that. And that alone can create a lot of dynamics in a positive way for our community.
Thank you. And Miranda?
Yeah, I look forward to working with the police and fire. But my biggest concern is, you know, how are we going to end pretextual stops? How are we going to, like, create relationships with the police department and Black and Brown people so it's safe for all community members? Because it's not. And so that's, I think that's what I'm looking forward to, working with the police. Like, it's, guess what? It's not a Black and Brown problem. The change needs to happen within the department as well. You can't just keep, like, the police department can't just keep pointing fingers at us. Yes, there's crime. Yes, there's, guess what? There's also trauma, there's also mental health, there's other factors, and that's not a crime. Like, we need to help people. And besides just throwing them in jail, that's not going to fix the problem. And Black and Brown people are suffering the most.
Thank you.
Thanks. With regard to workforce challenges that our Duluth businesses are facing, finding employees, or employees, potential employees' inability to find care for their children is preventing them from taking jobs in Duluth. What more can the city council do to ensure that childcare options here are both readily available and affordable? Eric Forsman will start with you.
Yeah, this is personal to me as a parent, and I've had an opportunity to work with the chamber, going down to our legislature, advocating for more funds, putting in unique programs through the 1200 Fund that actually puts toward the capital needs of childcare facilities. I was highlighted in my work on the front page of the Washington Post on Christmas Day of 2019, Fun Bar Trivia, three politicians that day, Eric Forsman, Donald Trump, and Kim Jong-un, true story. But I would like to think that my topic was a little bit better than whatever else was being covered. We can't have a full complement in the workforce if people can't have places for their kids to go, period. And so we have to do everything we can. Workforce for childcare has become the number-one barrier to having more childcare, because they can't keep teachers who are going to QuickTrip for better wages. And so, quite frankly, this is a model that should be thrown out at a federal level. We should invest in childcare like we do with our K-12 system. We don't have that, so what can we do? We can keep putting money toward helping with spaces. We can work with public-private partnerships, like helping with Ascension, putting in space at one of their one-roof facilities that they're partnering on, so that somebody doesn't have to pay to build up that space as a childcare operator.
Thank you. Lynn Marie Nephew?
As a mom of four, because I had good-quality childcare, I was able to build my business. So I think childcare is, of course, something that needs to be top of mind. Thankfully, I'm not in the childcare world anymore, my kids are too old. But I do see the importance. And programs like the 1200 Fund, I helped a new childcare provider use those funds along with money from the Entrepreneur Fund to open up a childcare space up in Harbor Highlands. And we need to foster those programs in order to get people off their feet, so that they can create them, build them, and make it so that parents can go to work. They can have jobs, they can build businesses, and not be burdened with staying home and having to care for their children if that's not what they choose to do. So I would support further programs like the 1200 Fund and other nonprofits in order to create those businesses.
Thank you. Miranda Pacheco?
Yeah, thank God. My kids are not in daycare anymore. I could not probably afford to go to work. But this just reminds me of a, I was at a block party, and I was talking to a neighbor of mine, and she provides childcare. And she was telling me about her model and the relationships, the relationships she's built with the moms. And they, the moms trust her, and they bring, they bring, they drive from far away to bring the kids to her daycare. And she charges pretty fair, and then she does not charge when, you know, like, the kids don't come to, don't come to the daycare. And so, I don't know, but she was telling me how she runs her small business, and I was like, why can't we make this more public? Like, why can't we have, like, different, different models? Because this is working for her. She's been doing it for years. And, I don't know, we just need something different.
Thank you. And Jenny Jaegel?
Yeah, thank you. I'm grateful that this conversation is happening, that the conversation about workforce development and childcare is happening at the same time. Again, for me, this is an economic justice issue and is personal in choosing to not have children because of the, because of the expense. And I do think that the, I know that the number-one reason why folks who work in childcare leave their jobs is because of wages. And I do think that the city has a responsibility to explore what would increasing our living, our minimum wages here in Duluth look like. These are also conversations that we need to be having with our public schools, and our libraries, and our community centers that deserve to be fully funded. Yes, we can fight for dollars to expand our childcare options. And what are some policies that we can put in place that will, that will raise us all up, who are workers? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the formal eight questions. We did it on time, so thank you all very much for your cooperation with that one. We'll have time for one-minute closing remarks from each candidate. Before we do that, I just want to give a couple of reminders that there's two more forums happening today that we're hosting at 12:00 and 1:30. Those are the district candidate races for the city council. Again, thank you all for being here. We'll sit at the end again and give the opportunity, an opportunity to applause. But before we do that, Election Day is November 7. Early voting begins September 22, which is just around the corner. So in closing, if you could all provide one-minute closing remarks about why people should vote for you, we would be grateful. We're going to mix up the order just a little bit, and we will begin with Lynn Marie Nephew.
Thank you again for putting this on. We do appreciate that. So economic development, it's the best generator of revenue for the city of Duluth. And I would argue that that's not feasible right now because of our housing crisis. We need more housing of all kinds, from rental to supportive to co-op and single-family. People are still renting when they should be owning. And we need to give opportunity for homeownership, to get people to build wealth, be in this community, and invest in this community. We need to make this a place where home builders are eager to build. We need to encourage investment, development in our housing stock, streamline permits, and improve our inspection processes. Duluth's ordinances need to be amended to cut that red tape. We need to get back to fully funding our core services and making Duluth a better place for residents. This includes supporting our infrastructure, from pipes to parks, to departments, quality assistance, quality equipment and training for our public safety officials. This is why I'm running for city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Miranda?
Yeah, thanks for having me. This was such an honor to sit up here and just talk about the issues that are important to me. And, you know, my, this is, when I first started, like, I had no idea what I was doing. And since I've been learning the steps that it takes to run for a campaign, because this is very unfamiliar territory for me, but it's so energizing and empowering for me. And my strength in this whole, this time that we've been doing this, has been talking to people and listening to people and carrying their stories forward. And I think that if I do get elected, that's going to be my strength. You will have a familiar face that will step up and tackle these issues.
Thank you. Jenna?
Yes, thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Daniel. And thank you, everyone, for being here today. We need a city that works for everyone. Every day, Duluthians do have the solutions to the issues that they face. And I know this because I have worked with a number of communities, organizations, and this because I have worked with a number of communities, organizations, and leaders to improve our city. And I will wait, I will work to make sure that what Duluthians need most are at the heart of public policy decisions and that communities that are most impacted are at the table. I will show up for all of us, and I do that now, and I will continue to do that as a city councilor. And the decisions that we make now on how to allocate and implement these historic funds for local governments will have generational impacts. That means affordable housing, investing in our public infrastructure. That means supporting our core city services, and I'm committed to working across our city to build a better Duluth for our whole community. And again, my name is Jenna Jaigle, and it is an honor to ask for your support in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric.
I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we are in the house of Matt Baumgartner. For those that don't know, he ran Grandma's Sports Garden for many years. The last time I was on a stage at Grandma's Sports Garden, I was in a Halloween costume contest with my wife dressed as the State Puff Markman. Uh, but, you know, while I like to have fun with these things, um, the work of the council is serious, and we need serious councillors who can work across differences to help solve these challenges, because we know that our challenges are not going to solve themselves. All the issues today that we talked about and all of the other issues we didn't have time for, we need to work collaboratively, and the council, thank you for showing up because it matters, the council should be a partner and a collaborator, but also a check on whoever's in the mayor's office. And whoever is the mayor is going to need a council that will work with them, but also hold them accountable. And as the person who would be returning with the most seniority of any councillor, I would hope to ask for your support and was humbled by it in the primary election.